August 26, 2025. We have everybody here except for the mayor, but I'm sure he's on his way. He was here. What? All right. Let's mess with me now. Great. All right. So we're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and Parant. Are you going to help us out with that? You come on up and help us out with that.
Everyone, please read that from me. (inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you so much. All right. Oh, welcome, Mayor. All right. So first up is approval of the minutes for the council meeting, July 15, 2025. Anybody have any additions, corrections?
I didn't have anything.
None.
Okay. So I would like a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from City Council meeting July 15, 2025.
I second it.
Okay. A first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes are approved. Move on to citizen comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Step to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and fill out the required form.
Okay. Leanne Parker Reed. I just wanted to thank all of you and all the citizens out there for voting in the primary election. I think that's a vital piece of our legislation, and we should continue to do that. And I wanted to thank all of those who are continuing forward. Congratulations. I want to give condolences to those of us who didn't quite make it any further, but I have an important information to say to those who are moving forward. I expect the same integrity and the same commitment to our city as always, and I will be watching. I appreciate that so much. Thank you, everyone.
I'm sure you guys can affectionately know me as the pond guy now. Once again, thank you genuinely and sincerely to the mayor, the council members, and city staff for all the time that they have spent on this issue. I know it's not an issue that affects a lot of people, but I do just want you to consider, what if it was you? When you have someone trying to do something like this, and it's your next-door neighbor, it has a big impact on you. I'm also doing this on the fly. I usually try to write things ahead of time, so forgive me if it's not eloquently spoken. But my understanding is the ordinance, a draft ordinance, is currently being worked on for this. And again, I want to thank everyone who's spending time on this issue. Knowing that it's being worked on, I wanted to raise a few ideas or suggestions that I hope that the ordinance will address and for you all to keep in mind once you see the ordinance. The first is, I hope it addresses setbacks. The second is, I hope that it, and it should address, the maximum size of a pond, given like the property size. So if it's a quarter-acre lot, is it reasonable to have a 60, 50, 30, 20-foot pond in that size of property? I know there can be a lot of debate on like what those numbers are, but I do think that that should be considered in the ordinance. The third is the lining. In my particular instance or situation, this pond, this giant pool-sized pond, is being built five feet away from my detached garage. So I have concerns that if it's not lined properly and maintained properly, that if it leaks, that it could cause structural issues for my detached garage. And then also water quality. I hope that the ordinance can consider water quality. Mosquitoes and bacteria can easily become an issue. Also, if you have a pool-sized pond, I think, I strongly believe that pools are very similar or ponds are very similar to pond, to pools. So we should look at the regulations we have around pools when we're considering this ordinance. For example, fencing along the property, the height of the fence, if it should be covered, if it exceeds a certain size, a kid could easily fall in a pond and drown. That is a major concern for me. And thank you again for all the time you're spending on this.
Okay. Go ahead and close the citizen comments. We're going to move on to special recognition. Murray City Employee of the Month, Human Resource Analyst, Nadine Brown, myself, Mayor Hales, and Robin Colton presenting. Yeah. So we're doing...
Oh, you know, I love this. It's Employee of the Month, and we've been doing it for about 12 years. Nadine, I can tell you're very nervous about this. I always tease, I can't really do this with Nadine, even though it's, Robin's the one that always wants to have the Employee of the Month. I don't know why, but she's always begging us to do it for her, but I'm kidding. But anyway, but Nadine is so nervous. But Nadine, this is exciting. This is a huge compliment to you. And Robin was very concerned. She goes, oh, Nadine doesn't really like the limelight. And I says, oh, we're going to do it anyway. So anyway, this is a big appreciation from the administration, from Robin, Robin's who nominated your name. This, Nadine works with, in human resources, and Scott's going to read the certificate regarding this. But we just want to say thank you for all you do for Murray City. It's huge. You're great. You're, Robin just gives a lot of, you're detail-oriented, and that's what she needs. So thank you so much for all you do for the city. And the council, and Scott represents the council here, so he'll go ahead and read this information. But let's give Nadine a big round of applause.
Okay. Nadine Brown, with gratitude for six years of dedicated service, precision, and commitment to excellence, with appreciation for hard work, valuable knowledge, and attention to detail, your behind-the-scenes contributions have made you an indispensable part of the Human Resource Department, or Department team, sorry about that. Thank you so much.
Oh, and by the way, there's 50 bucks in that thing, so that's right. Yeah, yeah. I know. That's right. I think, hey, we got 50 bucks. I want to bring that up. So anyway, okay, Robin's going to, the HR director, Robin.
Okay. I had to write this down so I don't forget while I'm up here. So Nadine's been an analyst in my department for the last six years, so she's been with me almost since the very beginning of me taking over the office. And she's just been consistent in demonstrating excellence and professionalism in all she does. Because we're such a small office, she has to wear lots of hats. So her primary responsibilities include recruiting, compensation, administration, so she tracks everybody's steps on the step plan. She manages our evaluation system. She oversees job descriptions and handles records retention. And I don't know anyone who's, I mean, of course, we all want to be perfect in our job, but she really does like strive to be 100%. Like, I've never met anyone who is just like, I have to get this. And she, all like 99.9% of the time, she's there. So she does awesome. One of her most impactful contributions has been her role in digitizing our HR files. So today I looked, and there's 944 old employee files, and some of these are like thick, thick files. And she's done the bulk of all of those in our office. So while she does a lot of stuff behind the scenes, she doesn't get a lot of recognition because she's in her office just working away. She likes to be busy all the time. And so I think, even though she's not in the spotlight, she's the kind of teammate everyone wants in their corner. And so that's why I think she was deserving of Employee of the Month, so.
I really appreciate that. Just wanted to say thanks to my husband and son for coming and supporting me. I think that they know that this is kind of uncomfortable for me, but I really love working for the city. It's been a great place to develop and grow and gain new knowledge. I have a fantastic group of ladies that I work with. We're really close-knit. And even though I don't live here anymore, I consider Murray my home away from home. So thank you.
So the next item is a joint resolution of the mayor and municipal council of Murray City, Utah, recognizing and celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Murray Symphony. Do I need to read this whole thing? 50 years. That's awesome. Wow. That's awesome. So...
Scott thought you were all here to comment.
I know. I was like, wow, what a turnout. But it's a, yeah. So coming from a former band geek, I mean, that's, this is, that's pretty awesome. I mean, 50 years in an organization like, you know, with an organization like that is, is pretty cool. And thank you, you know, and keep it up.
Thank you. Stand up one more time so we can see you. I apologize. I just want everyone to recognize, you guys are amazing. You've performed over the amphitheater, and you're just, I mean, really, they're a live orchestra, and to listen to them play is just, I love it. It's absolutely amazing. And we're looking forward to all of you performing in our new Murray Theater. So that's going to be fun. I know, I can see a lot of smiles from the director. But anyway, thank you so much for being here, and thank you, Scott, for recognizing them. And from the administration and the council, we are so grateful to have you here in Murray. So a huge round of applause again for our Murray Symphony. Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
City council members, Mayor Hales, and members here, thank you so much. My name is Michelle Willis. I'm the music director for Murray Symphony. And I wanted to say thank you on behalf of all of us for allowing us to be a part of your community. We feel very, very grateful and blessed that we have the opportunity to take our talents and things that we just love to do, and we love getting together, and it's like a family experience, and be able to take that love and bring it into the community and share it with you. That has brought us a lot of joy, and I've only been here just a portion of that 50 years, but I feel so very blessed and thankful that I've had the opportunity to work with Murray City and appreciate all the support that you all give and that you continue to help us do what we do best in serving this community. Thank you so much.
Okay. I've just been informed that I'm remiss in my duties here that I should read the rest of the resolution. Okay. So whereas Murray Symphony was founded in 1975 by a group of passionate local musicians united by shared dedication to making quality music by the community, for the community, and, okay, and whereas, geez, the Murray Symphony has been dedicated to bringing inspiring and uplifting music to the city of Murray, and whereas by the past 50 years, Murray Symphony has enriched the cultural landscape of Murray and the surrounding region through its commitment to artistic excellence and community engagement, and whereas the Symphony has provided countless opportunities for local musicians to develop their talents, collaborate, and share the joy of music with audiences of all ages, and whereas through concerts, outreach programs, special performances, the Murray Symphony has inspired generations, fostered a love of music, and strengthened the bonds of the community, and whereas the enduring success of the Murray Symphony is a testament to the dedication of its musicians, conductors, volunteers, board members, and supporters who have worked tirelessly for over five decades to sustain and grow this cherished organization. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Murray and City Council of Murray City do hereby recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Murray Symphony, express profound gratitude for its remarkable contributions to the cultural life of our community, and extend best wishes for many years of success and harmony. Oops. Moving.
Scott, can they leave?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. So I will entertain a mission. Motion.
I motion to approve the joint resolution of the mayor and municipal council of Murray City, Utah, recognizing and celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Murray Symphony.
I second.
Okay. We have a first and a second.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye. Guys have it. Motion's passed. Next is public hearings.
Scott, real quick, can they leave if they want?
Oh, yeah. Of course.
You don't have to stay.
Yes, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, this is exciting stuff. You may want to.
I mean, we're going to talk about landscaping. Come on.
Yeah. You want me to go ahead and read the thing that we're going to talk about first, or you want to just jump right into it? I know. He's messing with me. All right. All right. We have a public hearing section. Consider an ordinance amending sections 17.08.020, 17.68.030, 17.68.040, and 17.68.060 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to landscaping requirements. Zachary Smallwood presenting.
Hello, council. Nice to see you again. Yeah, this is a request from both the Planning Division and the Water Department to update our landscaping requirements for commercial and residential zones. I apologize, I don't have slides in front of you. I'm going to try to, I'm still going to look at my slides, but, yeah. So there are a couple places where we needed to add some definitions. So we're adding an active recreation definition, activity zones, and a definition of what lawn is. Also, in the landscape requirements themselves, so originally, we had requested that people give us three copies, paper copies. It was written in the code that they had to give us those paper copies for landscape plans. I thought that was a little antiquated. We don't usually take paper copies on most things anymore, so just cleaning that up. So also a couple other cleanup items. One of the things that we've experienced since I've been here for over seven years now is the requirement that the front landscape area had to be 50% of coverage at the time of planting. It seemed excessive and ends up costing a lot of money to do that. And so it was, we had been enforcing 50% at maturity, so this is just aligning the code with what, how we've been working through it. Also, we added, updated the various zones that are, I think, that are exempt from some of these requirements, specifically like our mixed-use codes, because they do have specific landscaping requirements that would be different than some of these standards as well. So lawn restrictions, specifically, we are requesting that turf grass and lawn shall not be installed in locations that are smaller than eight feet in width, and that they shall not be installed in park strip paths or slopes greater than 25% or four-to-one grade, and shall not exceed 20% of the total landscaped area outside of active recreation areas. Hence the need for a definition. That's for commercial. So residential shall not exceed 35% of the total landscaped area in the front and side yards of new residential construction, so this doesn't apply to people that already have their homes and landscaped. However, if they are wanting to go for that, the Utah Watersavers Program, some of that will come into play at that point when they convert that over. Small residential lots which have no backyard, which the total landscaped area is less than 250 square feet, and which the front yard dimensions cannot accommodate the minimum eight-feet-wide lawn area, are exempt from the minimum, that minimum there. So those are the large changes there. So our findings are the proposed text amendment promotes water conservancy for both business and residential users, especially since, you know, we had a couple, like what, two good water years back to back, and now we're kind of back at this not-so-great water year. The proposed text amendment's been reviewed to ensure the health, safety, and general welfare of the community are maintained. Staff finds the proposed amendment does not conflict with any recommendation in the general plan. The proposed amendment's annexed policy goals stated in both the Water Master Plan and the Water Conservation Plan. And the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 5, and voted five to one to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council. So with that, we are, the Planning Commission and staff are recommending that the City Council adopt the ordinance amending the sections as stated in your packet. And I'm happy to take any questions.
So nothing from us right now, Zach. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing section. Remember, comments will be limited to three minutes. Step up to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and fill out the required form.
My name is Rachel Palmer. I'm a resident of Murray, and I would just like to express my support of this initiative to update our landscaping requirements and to help us save some water. I'm really, as a side project, I've really gotten excited about learning more about sustainable landscape design, and I'm really excited to start taking that into my own residence just down the street in Murray. And I think that this is a great step forward to help us conserve some water, hopefully help our overall community, and also allow our fellow residents to be eligible for the Utah Watersavers Program. So I just wanted to voice my support of this initiative. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and close the public comments section. Anything from the council to add?
Like Rachel said, water conservation is so very important, so I'm really glad that we're hopefully passing this resolution. And with that, I will make a motion, if you would like.
I would accept one.
All right. You've got it. This is a motion to adopt the ordinance amending sections 17.08.020, 17.68.030, 17.68.040, and 17.68.060 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to landscape requirements.
I second it.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Brooke?
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye. Okay. The ayes have it. That has passed. Let's see. All right. Next item for, oh my gosh, there we go. Okay. Next item, public hearing. 17.116.070, 17120.070, 17.124.070, and 17.128.070 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to exemptions in the setback areas for all residential zones. Zachary Smallwood presenting.
Hello again. Yeah, so this is a really exciting text amendment for planning and zoning. We get a lot of residents that come in and are upset when they can't cover their porch or, you know, a patio or something of that nature, because the way we've enforced it for decades is that any covered patio or porch must meet the same setbacks as the home. So that's typically 25 feet in the back, 25 feet in the front, things like that. So it was great that we're able to make, you know, recommend this change. This would allow for, for those encroachments into the setbacks if it's open on three sides, so it's really just kind of a cover instead of a, you know, enclosed space. Cannot exceed one story in height. The roof canopy is no longer than one-half the width of the main dwelling, of which it's located. I already said the three-sides thing. The columns supporting the roof or canopy are constructed on individual pad footings or similar design, and in no instance, the additions encroach to less than, within 20 feet of a front yard or within 10 feet of a rear yard property line. So I had a bunch of cool diagrams that illustrated this, and you don't get to see any of them, so I'm sorry. I guess you get to see them in your packet, but the people that are here don't get to see my cool diagrams that I spent hours making. Just kidding. Not really. Not really. So really, I'll just say what the findings are, the proposed text amendment, proposed objectives, three of the neighborhoods and housing section of the general plan. The text amendment has been reviewed to ensure the health, safety, and general welfare of the community are maintained. Staff finds that the proposed amendment does not conflict with any recommendations of the general plan. And on June 5 of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted six to zero to forward a recommendation of approval. So we are recommending that, the Planning Commission and staff are recommending that the council adopt the proposed changes. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Zach. Go ahead and open the public hearing part. Just remember, as you step up to the microphone, comments will be limited to three minutes. State your name and city of residence, and fill out the required form, please. Okay. Seeing none. Council, do you have anything to add? Questions? No?
I don't, but I will move.
Will you?
I will.
Awesome. Thank you.
To amend the residential zones to allow greater encroachment into setbacks for porches, awnings, shades, and et cetera.
I'll second the motion. Okay. We have a first and a second. Brooke?
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye. All right. Resolution passes. Next item is a business item. Consider a resolution approving an inter-local cooperation agreement between the city and the Murray City School District for Murray City firefighters to teach fire education classes offered by the school district. Chief Joey Middleton presenting.
There we go. Sorry. The light thing, it's an easy thing. It's complicated, apparently, for me. But welcome again. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to propose this before you. What we've done is we've worked with Murray High School and Murray School District with their Technology and Trades Division... District with their Technology and Trades, uh, division, and one of the things that we've noticed is Murray School District has not had a fire science intro class, uh, that all the other school districts throughout, uh, the county have had. And so one of the things that we've worked with them on is just getting a couple of our folks here at Murray Fire Department to do a trade across the board. It doesn't come at any cost to the citizens or to the city, uh, in regards to the city aspect, it's covered underneath our regular funding with the school district, and we provide the employees, uh, to be able to go over there and educate, and then they reimburse us. But it's to hopefully get these kids in advance on being able to get into fire school, so they have to take a class that's a fire intro class, and behavior and combustion, they get to learn a little bit more, and then, not only that, it also goes into the technology and trades, as we spoke about in the committee of the whole of, like, fire alarm system installs, as well as, uh, sprinkler systems. And it just kind of expands their horizon within their high school education to really open up, uh, their opportunities. In our end, it really advances them to be able to get into the Utah Fire and Rescue Academy, which we're really excited, they could go right out of high school, right into the class with their EMT and their fire, uh, intro class, and hopefully, this will be a great recruiting tool. I shouldn't even say hopefully, I know it will be a great recruiting tool, and, uh, there's nothing better than finding one of those gems, which there's a lot of them out there, if you're listening. Uh, I don't think too many high school kids are listening to this, but there's a chance. We'd love to hire these folks, uh, as they become adults and are ready for the fire service. So, uh, thanks again for considering, uh, approving this, and, uh, do you guys have any questions for me?
Doesn't look like we have any questions. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of the interlocal agreement with the Murray School District.
I'll second. All right, have a first and a second. Brooke?
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye. And ayes have it, thank you, chief. Okay, uh, next up, mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. Um, the, the thing I wanna talk about for just a second is, um, a big thanks to our first responders for yesterday evening's event. Um, Kip, thank you so much, and Joey, thank you. Please let all your, uh, your employees know how much we love and appreciate them, and, uh, I've had the opportunity to speak to both fire chief and police chief, and they feel very blessed to have the employees that they have here at Murray City, and it just, it's, we're, we're lucky that we have such great employees, and, and, uh, and we're constantly, uh, keeping them in our prayers for safety with what we've seen lately as just a tragedy. And, um, anyway, we're grateful for our first responders, and it was a wonderful event. Uh, Cindy was there last night and said it was just, um, phenomenal, and, uh, and, um, thanks for all you that supported it, and again, thanks for all our citizens coming out and supporting. Uh, it's one of the most important things we have here, is, is our, uh, our first responders. So, uh, you protect our neighborhoods, and our citizens really love and appreciate all that, uh, you do for them, and, and so do we as a, a council and administration. So, that, that's my report, just to give a big thanks to our first responders, and you know what, I'd like to end with a, a, an applause for them, thank you. And that's my report, Scott.
Sorry, say again?
That's my report.
Okay, awesome. Okay, with that, we have no more business items, I do adjourn us.